We are reconvened at 6:02. May I please have a student in the auditorium that is from the APAS?
That's okay.
Oh, I thought Rick... It's not that. Okay, that's okay.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public communication. Any person wishing to comment?
No.
Okay, we have a report out from post-sentence decision following expulsion hearing. Backfiling hearing conducted by administrative review in case number 18GAP19/103, motion by board member Nick Hurst and second by board member Bizar. It is moved that the board may take an injunction clause to expel student number 23501 from all schools in the district for violation of education code EC48915B, possession of a knife or other weapon. Gainker's object of no reason abuse to the pupil EC48900C, possession used sale or under the influence of compelled substance intoxicant. Panel recommendation was that student number 23501 shall be expelled from the schools of the district for the remainder of the fall and spring semester 2018-2019 school year. It is further recommended that student 23501 may enroll at Orisimba High School at the beginning of the 2019-2020 school year. It was passed by a final vote. Public communication agenda and non-agenda items. Any person wishing to comment on agenda and non-agenda items may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to three minutes. California law prohibits the school board from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the board. Per board policy VB9323, individual speakers may be allowed three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The board may limit the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation. Depending on the topic, the number of persons wanting to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional persons speak only if they have something new to add. May I please, sir?
Madam President, may I approach the podium and step out of this row?
Yes, okay.
I would like to ask my fellow Lions Club members to come up. And Mr. Dino Farinelli to come up. Okay, there was a bit of a miscommunication about what Mr. Farinelli's students were going to be presenting on. So what we're going to talk about for just a moment is let our Lions Club president, Mr. Bill Mados, and Mr. Farinelli discuss a partnership between the Lions Club and OHS students.
Thank you, guys. So our OHS act department's been blessed with the opportunity to partner with the Lions Club on a barbecue trailer that we're planning on building for them. This is a great opportunity for us to connect with them and build a relationship in the department and in the community as well. One of the young men that's actually here with us this evening, Harrison Chang, will be one of the young men that'll actually be building that for the Lions Club. I know these young men are super excited about the opportunity and we're really blessed to be able to build that relationship with the Lions Club. So we thank you guys for that.
We'd like to thank the number of my pay for stepping forward and offering to build us a barbecue that we could use for community services. We know that the children and the young students need community hours, so I'm sure this will help them in that goal and it will help us help the community go on some fun rides and do some other things good for the community. Thank you.
You may have now.
What I would like to say is that what we want to see happen is more organizations in town partnering with our high school students or other students because they will be getting funds for this project. We have the first deposit made and they're ordering the supplies. These students need to make certain that they know that there's a real world out there and they're helping us do a real-life project, so we're very, very proud of this. So thank you.
Thank you. Approve of the agenda. May I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
They're moved to approve the agenda as planned as per public...
May I have a second? All in favor? Information discussion items. These are items that make you good for having a voice on last. We have Mr. DiMartini who will be presenting the following students for the boards tonight. Mr. DiMartini, do you have your name?
Yes. Evening, President and members of the board. I'm Jim DiMartini, president of Westside Healthcare Task Force. And with me tonight is the mayor of Newman, Mayor Bob Martina, and the school nurse, Mrs. Nettie. We're all members, longtime members of the task force. So just before I present the award, just a little bit... A little bit about the task force here. We just work in the West Side. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that works in Patterson, Newman, and Dust Beach. And we work for the benefit of the people who live in this area. We advocate for better medical services, for at least more of them, extended hours, specialists, whatever we can get to improve medical services in this area. And then in addition to that, we promote a healthy lifestyle. And so this is our children's program that we're going to be presenting the awards on tonight. We do programs for adults, we develop senior citizens, and we do a health summit and baby's wizard contests over here. And this one is for kids, and this is actually one of my favorite ones. They have a calendar that we put out each year, and I have a stack of them on the table back there. These are free, you can put free, take one home. If you go into the city hall of Newman, they have those, you can get those when you come in. We do, in our contest, we have four categories. Okay, four categories in these divisions. And so it's kindergarten, first grade, in first division, second, and third in the next division, then fourth, fifth, and sixth, and the next one, and seventh, and eighth. We have three winners for each, so the younger children will have to compete against the older ones. So our objective here, the theme changes every year, is using some combination of diet and exercise theme. So I thought that these were very well done. We had about 400 entries this year, so it's not easy to make the grade here. Every school has its own winners, and so you have five this year. But that was pretty good. And this is the calendar, and we're going to present the awards now. The mayor is going to give back the original artwork to the students, and then we each have, for each kid, it's a $50 gift certificate. Okay, so I don't know if the kids are here or won yet, but I'm going to read them off. If it's not, I'll leave the awards with your superintendent. Taylor Resendez, first grade winner. Hey, this is your original artwork, and you can keep this. It's a member that you're a winner.
Yep, that's yours.
And it's a $50 gift certificate plus we have a pedal. Hey, Louis Armando Torres. Congratulations. There, you can do a quick calendar with your artwork on there. Okay, in second grade, trying to get this name right, Dolce Miranda. Congratulations. Also in the second grade, Izzy Lopez. And the final one is Julian Alamon. There you have your congratulations. The objective of this contest is to teach the kids the importance of diet and exercise. If they learn that at the young ages and carry with them, we hope to a lifetime, can avoid a lot of problems like heart disease, hypertension, diabetes. And we chose the awards by sticking with the theme, and I thought they were all great entries.
You will notice on the agenda that you see LCAS, which is Local Control Accountability Plan, and we try to align everything with that because we've been working very hard at creating those goals. And I'll tell you what goals, so if you need to look it up. Next is the recognition of retired Mark Chamberlain, and I believe he's not here tonight.
We wanted to recognize him because he did retire. He's a custodian of the board at Arlington recently, but he moved out of state. So we've been sending him a congratulation plaque of his service to the president.
Our school of the month is the Alternative Education, Mr. Dunbar?
I'd first like to introduce my student of the month of really the semester is Angelina Lopez, if she would please come up. I wanted to recognize Angelina just because of the extreme hard work that she has done this semester and achieving some of her goals. She started out with me deficient in credit for, you know, personal reasons, and she's really persevered to break through that. It looks like at this point, she's done about 60 credits. She's recouped, and she probably can still do a little bit more before we end for the semester. And I just thought that was, she's just kicking butt, which is awesome. And she's getting, and she's getting all As in her classes as well. So we're looking to hopefully have her start next semester back at OHS. She's got to reach a goal of so many credits, and then we can get her back over there. And I just wanted to recognize that, and, you know, she's been very proud of everything that she's done, and that she's been through, so I just wanted you guys to recognize that.
Thank you.
Okay, just little updates on Alternative Ed program. Currently, we have 25 students at West Side. Some things that are changed for this year, for the positive, is I believe last year, we only had at least two students with split schedules, and we're up to 11 students with split schedule between our site and Orisimba. And I think Mr. Provo for that, his staff are working with those students to have that opportunity to get their recruited credits and get a buy-in so that hopefully they can go back to the high school, which is something that we all want for them to gradually from OHS.
Are all the class, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
All the classes, are they like vocational classes or are this some academic classes?
The most of them are trying to be vocational, they're doing some of the academic with me and some vocational ed classes, or most vocational ed classes at high school because obviously they can't, they can't get that with me. And I know that was an emphasis that we talked about last year.
Right, okay, thanks.
Okay. So that's, that's West Side, Foothill. We're down a little bit, which is good. I think the lower the number is probably the better at Foothill. We have eight students at Foothill. Hopefully, going to transition one back at the semester. We continue to try to work with Mr. Vargas and the maintenance department, hopefully having them do some projects around the district, get some buy-in, and want them to get back to their site as well, back to YOLO or either OHS if they're a freshman. Adult education, I want to talk a little bit about. The program's really grown this year. Pretty happy to say that currently in our ESL program, we have 47 adults that we're serving, which is a huge number. We've split it up, we're doing it a little bit differently this year. We have beginners ESL and intermediate ESL, so we split the adults in half, that seems to work better. Those that need a little bit more support can get that support. Those that are a little further along, they can move on, move along a little bit quicker. Another class that we added this year for the adults was the forklift certification that's done at the high school. And this is really, has been an emphasis for us in the consortium is that we want to be able to get adults back into the workforce, and this allows them to do that. We've had multiple adults that have asked us, or that, when we posted this class, they needed that certification to be able to apply for a job. And for us to be able to do that is awesome. We do it once a month on a Saturday, and Mr. Rico can get them all certified in one day. And last month, we did eight adults to get certification. And so we'll do it once a month for the school year. And that's been, that's been pretty awesome to get that in there. And that was, that was helped from the high school getting the forklift.
Kids can sign up for that online or adults sign up online?
Yeah, they just got to contact the MySite, and then we'll sign them up. And then whenever we have it, we let them know, and they can go and get it done on a Saturday. We have 20 adults in the high school diploma program, 13 in the Microsoft Office certification, that's a continuation of what we're doing. That's good because our numbers got down a little bit last year, but we're up now, so that's good. And then we have eight adults in the welding class that Mr. Rico does as well. So I'd like to get that, I'd like to see those numbers get, go up a little bit, but that's, that's okay, so we're working on that.
Do they do the welding during school day or is that on Saturday also?
No, the welding is during the week, Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Oh.
And then, so in total, we have 96 adults being served in our community, which is an awesome number. I'd like to get us hopefully over, over the 100 mark, but I think we're doing a decent job with that. And then the field trip that we took this fall was to Monterey Bay, and that was kind of the inspiration for the artwork that the students did. And they enjoyed that, and hopefully we'll be able to take them somewhere in the springtime, too.
That's good, thank you. Nice numbers, especially going back into the workforce.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
The OHS greenhouse presentation?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm, my name is Asian Nunes, and I'm currently a senior at Orisimba High School and enrolled in an advanced interdisciplinary science for sustainable agriculture. So our action plan for the greenhouse is to create an environment where the community can come together, can come together to build a stronger connection, all while being able to obtain vast knowledge for the future, for the future of others. The greenhouse will spark interest into different career pathways while developing responsibility, time management, financial budgeting skills within students in the community. Lose Control Accountability Plan, or LCAS, is set up to ensure that all students in the Newman-Cruzetti Unified School District are able to achieve the goal of being college and career-ready. This program allows schools to have an undeniable learning experience that will help them in future endeavors in life. It also gives the advantage that will assist any facet of our community with the help of our self-sustaining greenhouse. And finally, it gives a plethora of students the chance to explore and obtain various skills and explore the skills in agriculture.
As part of the educational experience, we are bringing back the plant sale. The plant sale provides the opportunity for the greenhouse to be financially stable through community-supported agriculture boxes and farmers' markets.
A CSA box is a monthly subscription for fresh produce that we've grown in the garden, or, or the greenhouse, sorry. These can cost from $15 to $25 depending on the size of the box. And then the farmer's market is a way to provide fresh produce for sale and provide booths at the farmer's market for people to showcase their products.
Our greenhouse will supply several opportunities for students at our school, such as plant genesis, soil scientists, and a pest control advisor. And this will give special, several opportunities for businesses in our community.
So within this project, we are able to teach students like life skills and responsible time management, money management, social skills, and work habits.
So with us rejoining the greenhouse, it'll open up more opportunities to bring in like class curriculars. We hope to bring in more student involvement, like people who didn't want it to be in APAS but didn't have the opportunity to. And we're going to involve programs like VR program and robotics program. We want to bring in elementary students and teach them about agriculture to get them involved, you know, a little earlier, as well as other clubs over campus. And we have a partnership with the special ed department to help teach them responsibility and time management, leadership, and social skills.
With the greenhouse, we have an opportunity to evolve our community. One of our first ideas of doing that is a farmer's market where we can open booths for local vendors and other people in the town.
Another idea that we had is a community garden, and this would allow long-term family students a chance to experience growing their own stuff and being able to do that. And another idea we had is the partnership with schools, especially elementary students, to give them, to expose them to different parts of agriculture and hopefully they will refine it.
So I wanted to show you guys some pictures of what our greenhouse actually looks like right now. Unfortunately, we're not the proudest of these pictures at this time. As you can see, things look a little bit dilapidated. At this point, that picture that's in the upper right-hand corner was of an old existing cooling system for the greenhouse that is no longer there. Inside, you can see kind of some dilapidated heating, and it's hard to see in the picture up on the projector, but there's some wires rolled up in the corner, and it's, it's in rough shape. So we wanted to kind of show you guys where it's at now and give you guys an idea of where we wanted to take this to. So unfortunately, it's kind of just a storage area for me to start plants right now, but our goal is in the future to really bring this back to where it needs to be.
All right, for the electrical component, we've actually talked to a electrical business, and they were willing to donate the panels and breakers. But the other material we will need are the wires and the timers, and it's going to be roughly about $1,500.
Our lighting, three, six ceiling lights, and for the six, 648, and each ceiling light is 4 feet long.
We chose the high-performance T5 light bulb we picked up because they save a lot of energy and they provide all the stuff that we need. And they come in 25 packs, and we can buy, I believe, five of them, and then 1079 each, 269 for the whole thing.
We are planning to create our own hydroponic system, and we are planning to use PVC pipe, buckets, and drip irrigation for our irrigation system.
With the hydroponics units, we will be able to grow herbs, tomatoes, and as we eat lettuce. That's for this, for both hydroponics units, is about $1,500.
Next, we'll need mini fans, and we decided to get 28 circulation fans, which will help move the humidity towards the exhaust fan in order to help control the external environment. And we'll need six of those at 96, 95 each.
In order to ensure that our greenhouse is fully functional, we need an exhaust fan. The exhaust fan is a crucial part of the greenhouse as it ensures that our plants don't catch diseases as well as the humidity control inside the greenhouse. This estimates to be around $719, as well as the power supply cord, that is $15.
So by adding heating, it will help us grow plants in the winter and keep, help us keep growing plants in the future. By adding heating, it will help us... It will help us grow during cold times and help us grow some plants, and it will cost about $1,110. What was our question for that?
The desotonic control of the environment agriculture is an injector that automates fertilization for an exacation every time, which is... Which is the, which is an injector, the autopilot environmental control, which is the one second. It is, it incorporates an optimal level of performance and delivers the lowest cost of ownership possible, meaning they connect through your phone, so it's an app, and while you're not at school, you can, like, put it to help. You can change the temperature, you can change the different, your convenience gas levels. The benefits of it is that it can generate, generate more income for our chapter and provide students with resources and opportunities to prepare them for college or career. The pricing is, for the autopilot environmental control, it is $177. The pricing is for autopilot environmental control, it is one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The dosatonic controlled environmental app is seven hundred?
Seven. Something like that.
And the app is free.
Okay, we also need irrigation, so we're planning on installing new PVC lines above. And we want those sprinkler heads and we're going to want six of those, uh, and they're two ninety-five each.
We also need a heating section to store our mother plants. Um, it would be a year-round fixture that we can use during plant sales and it would be three hundred and seventy-three dollars.
These are the totals for all the materials I need to renovate our greenhouse. If you guys want to look and, and then our estimated total price is eleven thousand and fifty-three dollars. Do you guys have any questions?
Are you guys planning on having fundraisers or?
Uh, we're planning on having two sets of CSA, CSA boxes, which is a monthly subscription, subscription. We will have two sizes about, there's going to be a smaller size of fifteen dollars and a bigger size that has twenty-five dollars worth of vegetables or anything that we grow inside of our greenhouse. We will also be having farmer's markets and plant sales.
If you were going to sign up for one of the vegetable boxes, how would you do that? And when will they be available approximately?
I'll fill that one. Uh, in all honesty, uh, we are just in the beginning stages of this. Um, my plant science classes just recently put some, uh, we put peas and, um, we put some, uh, sa- or, uh, some lettuce and we put a few other things outside. So we are just now starting to get the garden rolling. Uh, but unfortunately, without that greenhouse, it has been very difficult to get things started. And, uh, obviously with cold weather, that's what is behind too. Um, but the CSA boxes would definitely come into play more so in the future. But, uh, Morg- Morgan had something that she wanted to share with you guys on the fundraising aspect of this.
I wrote a donation letter this one. For, oh, for people who are willing to donate anything to our chapter. Um, we are hoping to rent for people, the donors who rented, like, know about the greenhouse. So we are going to send these out to businesses around town, anywhere, so they can talk about it.
And you have a list of like what?
And I have a list of at least like fifty people, like businesses and stuff, just send this to you.
Not, not just local businesses, but people that are within the ag community that struggle just, you know, farther than our own personal, our own small community here. I would suggest that you send each of the board members one of those letters.
Can you take someone on here, guys?
Oh, okay.
If, if the district is, do, who does, who is subject written to? To the district and ag department underneath or?
Boy, you are asking questions. I don't know. Um, I didn't know if I was going to get to answer those, but Mr. Philpot?
Let me back, let's back up just a minute. And I just want to share with you, uh, how proud we are of this class to take this initiative on. Uh, it was a few months ago that, uh, they gave, uh, Mrs. Mendoza and myself a call that they come out and take a look at, you know, what we're thinking. And I, and I gotta tell you, I, I shared this with them and then six years ago when I came to this district, I kept looking at that greenhouse and thinking, when are we going to? And this, this group finally is dating them on themselves. So we found the money to cover eleven thousand. What they're going to be asking you for is the sustainability of it. Because it's going to cost, and, and even though, like, they did a lot of research on what the total cost of this is going to be, sometimes there's unknowns that come up.
Right.
Um, but one of the things that we talked them about was, you know, if we're going to put that kind of money in for the CTE program, uh, to support the greenhouse, it needs to be sustainable. This is not something that's going to, um, end. And I will tell you this, uh, I'm very impressed with the enthusiasm of all students here. They all really are very concerned about their legacy for their fellow students that are coming behind them. Um, so the, so the donation letter is actually more of a, something for sustainability and maybe working with Mrs. Mendoza to kind of make sure that we, we are clearly indicating how to actually donate that money. This was kind of a practice run for them. I, but I kind of told you that, right? And I think they've done a wonderful job and I, and obviously because Mr. Bizard is ready to go ahead and sign a check right now. I think that says, it says a lot about the presentation, so.
One of the things that I was very excited about was when the Floral Club decided to do a floral club. And then Mr. Rico, I went to him and said, "Frank, why don't you join?" Did it right away this year when school started, it was like, "When do you want your money?"
Yeah.
Just let us know. Because I'd love, I'd love to go get a box of vegetables and, but even, but they have to be raw. I don't like them raw. Anything raw, I'd be, so if you're selling peas, let me know. And let us know. But thank you. I mean, this is something, it's a legacy. It's like our almanor. Sure. It's not a one-year or a true year. This is for many, many years. And, uh, I think our community will be very appreciative of it and help you a great deal.
Oh, I'm, I'm sure of it. I mean, I know that this is going to be an awesome opportunity for them to get to, get back there.
Give us regular updates too as to what's happening, you know, we, we would really like to hear about.
Just, I mean, I, I know personally, not just from me, but from my whole class, uh, we appreciate the opportunity to be here and be able to speak in front of you guys. Um, this, this does absolutely great things for these guys, whether they know it or not. But being up here nervous in front of you guys, the best thing we could have done for them.
Are, is this mostly going to be for a class project or will the individual, um, experience part of the program be going on as part of this too?
This is going to be cross-curricular with everybody. Um, I am, uh, obviously this is my advanced science class. My plant science classes will be involved with it. Uh, we are planning on having, uh, the special ed department. I mean, there's, there's a lot of different opportunity. And in the ag department, I've already offered for kids that even if they don't have me and you want to get involved in the plant science field, come on, look, jump in, come join us. So anybody that wants to be involved with it, we are one hundred percent open to that.
I have a friend who has such a degree in hydroponics and passes on hydroponics form. I guess, I like it because it doesn't have a lot of dirt. But, I mean, people like that might be able, even be able to come and discuss it.
Dirt's the best part.
No, dirt's not good.
I really want to credit our students and credit our, our FA. We see a lot of FA projects that are very livestock-based because it's, it's pretty simple to raise a turkey, raise a pig, something like that. It's a nice clean thing. It's like, if you're done, the jobs are in plant ag. You know, a TCA license and the various things like that that probably tend to win jobs in plant ag, the animal ag. So I'm really pleased that you guys are kind of stepping into that, that part of agriculture that really provides the future, but maybe isn't quite as sexy as some of the future ones. Yeah, no, it definitely works out inside it.
Okay, and I wanted to say that, uh, when the Lions Club came up and we were talking about our partnership, um, within the, of the Veterans of the Foreign War Auxiliary, I was talking to one of the leaders in Trulock and they partner with their FFA students at the high school to provide plants at different events and everything. So when you're doing that, we might want to think about that and we can find some partnerships for you through that.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you, you guys.
Thank you, students.
What's that?
This is what community is all about, it's about these students, not about our, our adults, what our young people are doing. You're the leaders of the world, come on. And we're, I'm just so excited whenever I talk about community. And we have another student who is on the board and maybe one of you out there sitting might want to try, who might be a senior. Stormy, would you, do you have a report, uh, editor?
Thank you. Uh, the word in your organization is donating money to the OHS to plant peace poles in our quad area. The peace poles will symbolize a safe, united environment. They will also include words from a large variety of languages spoken from students on campus. Orisimba has officially submitted their application to see if we qualify to become a model school. Fall sports have ended while winter sports have just begun. Um, the semester one finals will take place this week and next week. GSA's YES Conference in San Francisco has been canceled due to poor air quality and other complications. We are trying to make an effort to attend local events to make up for it. The Helping Hands Club has been asked to take part in organizing the two thousand and nineteen Create Our Space, um, youth summit. Our own art teacher, Mr. Lane, is also making an effort to help by designing our summit's, um, T-shirt logo. To kick off the holidays, groups such as, um, Girl Soccer Team and the OHS has been, have, um, took part in the holiday parade in Newman. Bass Club has passed out waters to the participants of Modesta's Jingle Bell Run and HYLC Ring Bells in participation of the Salvation Army tradition. Last but not least, the school-wide Paradise Campfire donations will be collected by this Friday, December fourteenth. Products being collected include toiletries, school supplies, and household essentials.
Thank you, Stowe. Next on our, on our agenda are, is about Footsteps to Brilliance, the update, Mr. Philpot?
So Footsteps to Brilliance is our literacy app that is part of our school-ready initiative. And you may, may remember that on November seventh, we had a, uh, a press conference at the Westside Theater that kicked off the, uh, the event. Um, and I challenged our, um, zero through, uh, age through third graders uh, at all the elementary schools to an eight million word challenge. Um, and our students and our staff took that extremely seriously. Because that challenge was to meet eight million words between November seventh and March second. That eight million word challenge was exceeded this last Friday. So we're excited about that. We're excited about all the efforts and stuff. Barrington alone almost did half of that amount, which is pretty impressive. And I can see, Mrs. Robo's back there gloating. Likely so. But we are going to celebrate. Now, we had, we had promised a celebration of a barbecue. It's kind of hard to do a barbecue in, in, in the winter. We're going to do, still do a barbecue to celebrate that success and stuff in, in March. But we're also going to do a, we're going to do a presentation of, of a little goodie and stuff coming up next week on some of their holiday, uh, events, I think Tuesday is when that's going to happen. Um, and so we're going to recognize them for achieving that eight million. But we're going to reset that goal again. Because obviously, we set it too low for our champions. And so we're going to reset it at sixteen million words. And I think that, I know there's a few principals that are looking at that going, we can do that on our own. Um, but anyway, I think we've done a great job. Um, and I just want to, I want to thank our principals out here and stuff who have helped us.
Thank you. Maybe we can get a spoke of that.
I should point out actually, so what you're seeing from the screen, which I kind of looked at more to see, but there is a, uh, a screen back up over here to my, to my left behind me, uh, which now is already been met for the eight, eight words. Um, so on the website, uh, our public relations person, Joanne Lamas, has kind of put on there, um, a moniker, if you will. So that's going to be updated to have this to the sixteen million words. Um, and we're tracking that. In fact, we're, the, uh, Footsteps to Brilliance is giving us kind of a calendar of how we can actually log this. And you'll see, kind of, as it's, as the words are being done, you'll see it update periodically and stuff on, on the website as well. Pretty exciting.
Hey, we have a first reading of AP four-one-one-four Transfers and BP and AR five-one-one-one-point-one District Residency, BP oh-four-one-oh Non-Discrimination in District Programs and Activities, BP and AR five-one-four-five-point-one-three Response to Integration Enforcement, BP one-three-four-oh Access to District Records, BP three-five-one-four-point-one Hazardous Substances, BP one-two-four-oh Volunteer Assistance, BP and AR one-three-one-two-point-three Uniform Complaint Procedures, and AR and BP twelve-fifty Visitors/Outsiders. And this is all part of our ballot cabinet. It's called one and two, and that's our homework. And board self-evaluation, do we have that compiled? Yes, it's in your, your blue folder. We didn't do that. We, as a board, um, just to let you know, I, some of us, Mr. Wallace and myself and Mr. Philpot went to a California School Board Association convention. And listening to some of the school boards around, I could, we are the, kind of the oddballs. We get along well. We allow each other to disagree. We have very, um, decisive discussions, but we also treat each other with civility. So, um, we have to evaluate ourselves and see how we, what we thought we were doing. And then it's compiled for us to look, to see how the five of us feel. Does anyone have any?
I suppose I can ask a question. Is this going to be available to the public on, on our website? Was it, or?
It was not included in the backup because I do not have all the scoring in.
I would suggest that actually, uh, since, one of the things on the agenda actually for January is the, is a review of the board governance handbook. That you take this information back tonight, uh, and all over it, see how it might impact the board governance handbook and also the board. Um, and then at the next meeting, we'll make sure that that summary is part of the public document that's there so that you can actually talk to the board to, to.
Right, and the public has a question right here in the.
Correct, yeah. That'd probably be a better use of time, spending time right now than reading through it or reading it out loud or anything.
Mr. Smith?
Good evening. Good evening. President reporting, members of the board, Superintendent Philpot. I have the honor, as I do each month, to recognize attendance here in our district. Attendance gets very special this time of year when it's dark, it's cold, it's foggy. And still, we have people showing up to work. We have students showing up to learn. And with all of those things that I, I don't want to, it's too cold. I just want to, you know, throw my alarm across the room if I'm in seventh grade. I don't want to go, mom. All those things make these awards that much more challenging this time of year. First off, I want to leave off with our staff. Uh, and so I want to recognize our staff with the best attendance of all the school sites in our district, receiving Red Apple, Bonner Elementary School. For our best student attendance, not wearing a Fitbit this evening, Monica Ritter. And if I could just stop?
Oh.
And, yeah, if I could have you turn around.
Oh, no.
For the least percentage of chronic absenteeism, Bonn River Elementary School. I don't know if you're hockey fans out there, but that's called a hat trick, my friend.
I move the approved consent calendar is published.
I second that. The consent calendar items are routinely nuclear and usually do not require board discussion. Individual items can be moved by board members and presented for discussion in separate acts. The consent calendar will be adopted by roll call vote.
I have another call. Mr. Bazar?
Aye.
Mrs. Hurst?
Aye.
Mr. Snodderling?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace votes aye. Mrs. Conforti?
Aye.
Pass is five zero. I guess I need to let you say pass is five zero.
It's up on my white papers. Number two, approve first term budget.
Good evening. I'll try and talk on right, but I'm not sure if I can do that. We, you mentioned before about tying the board agenda to the LCAP and the goals of the Strategic Action Plan. We developed a document and there were some copies on the table, and you each have a copy with you, to kind of streamline and give a visual picture of how everything works together. We have individual site plans, we have the LCAP, and we have our Strategic Action Plan. And they really do all work in tandem. So the Strategic Action Plan is the driving force of the district. And we have ways that we measure the success of those through the, the metrics outlined in Relationships, Relevance, and Rigor. We measure those, those are on the, those are part of the, of the School Accountability Dashboard. And then we have our LCAP, which is our overarching funding plan for the district. And those have eight priority areas that are set by the state. And those, we, what we decided a couple of years ago is that all of those eight areas fall into two goals. So instead of having five or six goals to keep track of, we challenge everything into two goals. And one is to prepare all college, all students for college and career. And the second is to increase student and community engagement. So community is the community at large, our, our school communities, our district communities. So that everything we do funnels into one of those two things. So this document has a QR code, which is a link to this Strategic Action Plan on our website. And the other is a link to our LCAP, which is posted on our website. So we have our assumptions that we planned the mid-year budget review. We have cost of living adjustments this year, which is 3.7%. Next year is scheduled to be about two and a half, and a little over that the following year. We're using a little bit of a cautionary tone because we're hearing some, some rumors that the COLA for next year may not be entirely funded. So we're kind of waiting to see in January where that, where that goes.
Which category was that, federally?
No, this is the state.
State, the cost of living.
Yeah, the state cost of living adjustment. So we'll see when the governor's budget comes out in January where, where that looks like it's worked out. The storage rate continues to increase. We're hoping that it's going to level off. In 2020, 21, there is a statutory limit to what that can be. However, with hers, there is no limit. They can keep, they can keep increasing that. So as, as we go, I think 2021 is gonna kind of top out. And it's, it looks like it's gonna stay there for a little while. The good news is our, our, our daily attendance is increasing. Although we think that probably in the next year and a half, it's about to level up as well. So cha, we have had some changes since the budget was adopted into life. What we thought we were getting in mandated cost reimbursements was reduced by almost half. So we haven't fully budgeted all of that revenue. So that didn't mean a whole lot as far as needing to make any cuts for us. It's just some money that won't, that we won't realize this year. We made some adjustments, which were increases for the ADA projections. We had, what we had budgeted before, we, we surpassed those. So we were able to add in some additional revenue for the ADA production and the unduplicated counts. And the unduplicated counts are students that are English learners, low socioeconomic or foster, and/or foster students. So we also received news that we will be receiving the Low Performing Students Block Grant. We haven't budgeted in that yet because we're not sure exactly when that's gonna be coming. But it will be funded at almost $2,000 per eligible student. So we'll be looking at about $165,000 in this one-time money. And we're not sure exactly how we're gonna, we'll, we will need to develop a plan for how we implement that. And we're not sure what the timelines would be, so we have some work to do on that. So our enrollment, when we did the budget adoption, we were expecting a little over 3,200. We are kind of right there, but our ADA has increased. Our student attendance rates are higher than what we had originally anticipated. So our revenue is looking to be close to 41 million, which has about doubled since, since right before the recession. But our expenditures are still well within that, and our ending balance is, is gonna be near 7 million. And that's where it's projected at this time. So you can see historically, our, our attendance to enrollment is, has been increasing. This goes back to 2009, and so we are steadily increasing. So the ending balance looks like it will be just nearly $7 million. And you can see how it's broken down. A lot, a big portion of that is restricted. So that money is program-specific. So we'll be looking at ways to use that. Some things we want to hang on to for a little while, some things will be spent down. We will be taking a little bit of money out of the ROP to fund the greenhouse. So that's where that's gonna come from. We do still have some money sitting in the mandate reimbursements, but that is, we have to consider that one-time money. So when it's gone, it's gone. So we are contin, we are holding contingency for increases to special education and for the continuing persons' terms increases. We also did a, when we negotiated the contract for this current school year, we increased in addition to the Health and Welfare Cap for all, all groups. So we anticipated that we'd have an increase of enrollment for those. But we, that doesn't go into effect until January. So we weren't sure exactly what that would look like, but we want to hold some money for that. So things that we need to continue to consider, increased employer contributions, of course. That's on, that's first on the agenda every time. Any kind of revenue surplus is coming in as one-time funding sources, which has been fairly conservative from the state because they, they recognize that if you have a windfall, you may not continue to have that ongoing. They're not gonna commit that to ongoing no worse. I think there will be a third round of career technical education funding, which is good. We've been getting, every time we get a round, it's about $275,000. So if we can get another, another round, that would be great for, for our sustainability. We've put a lot of investment into those programs, both for the agriculture program and the media arts. And I think those are the two big ones on campus. But we have, we have done a lot of investing in those, and we'd like to be able to sustain it. Now, now that we're fully implemented in the LCAP, we have to maintain our 24 to 1s. We watch those numbers very closely. And we have to really continue to address the, and engage the stakeholders in, in the process of developing the LCAP. It's not just, once in February, we bring everybody together and have a meeting. We really need to be making sure that they understand the, the LCAP and what it's about. And that it's an ongoing process, not just a one and done. Anyone have any questions?
Are you, are, are you seeing costs coming from the next generation science students?
We're looking at an adoption next year. So we have that factored into the budget, in the multi-year projection for next year. Because we will be doing social science.
Social studies.
Social studies and, and science coming down the road.
Carolyn, you're, you're gonna see the governor's budget in January, but is it expected that it would be the, I guess, the, an indication of what this new governor is likely to want to emphasize? Or is it expected to be the old governor's budget just continuing?
I haven't heard a lot of discussion, other than that they may not fund the COLA entirely. My feeling, that was just discussions that we've had locally, is that there won't be a lot of radical changes in the first year. I think there, I think that he has, may have other priorities besides redoing the budget. I mean, it took, it took over around eight years to implement the LCAP. And that was, that was a big shift in how things were done. I don't see him undoing that immediately, or, or funding it a different way. So I'm hopeful that we'll continue on because I think probably in 2020, 21, somewhere in there, that the economy's gonna kind of level off, if not downturn a little bit. So I'm hoping that we won't have too much correction to make. We have had a lot of refunds, but I don't see a big shift changing immediately. But we'll see in January.
CSDA watches that same question. There's not a lot of real clear indication yet. But one of the things that we have seen from the new governor is he is extremely interested in early childhood education, maybe more so than K-12, K-14 education. CSDA's been watching to see what winds up as early childhood as opposed to spending on TK or K-14.
I, I think the only thing that might be encouraging to the law says that, I know, I think it was just last week that, that Governor Lake, although you see, I'm very, very much interested in doing kind of universal preschool. He did acknowledge, it's gonna be a couple years before that probably is gonna happen. And I think he understands that there's infrastructure issue, different terms of classroom. We already heard that what we think we're hearing is that he is very interested in releasing a lot of the bond money that was passed by the state, which would help us a lot in matching funds and being able to, to maintain the building.
Mr. Philpott, how are we doing as far as class size? I mean, we're doing fine now, but do we have someplace where we're getting real close?
Barrington and Bonn River are probably the closest, but we're monitoring that on a, on a regular basis. We're actually a little bit above 24 to 1 in Barrington for a little bit, but then it went back down. So, you know, we, we monitor that. We have some mechanisms of actually kind of leaping that pressure. But it's average over the entire year.
Oh, it's okay.
Yeah, so it's not like you have to worry about it through this one, you know, one month or something, so.
Any other question? When December, January comes, we have, sometimes have our attendance go down. Historically, how far down does usual go that?
Well, some years we've had a drop from December to April, about 20, anywhere about 20. Last year it wasn't like that. It was very close. So we, I watch those about every other week to kind of see where we're going because I like, I don't want to be surprised.
Right.
So this year, I think it's, as long as the enrollment stays consistent. We've had some years, well, we have a lot of families move over the break. I don't imagine that's gonna happen this year, especially with public construction that's happening.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the interim budget?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Bazar?
Aye.
Mrs. Hurst?
Aye.
Mr. Snodderling?
Aye.
Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
And Mrs. Conforti, both on the floor. Approval of the annual and five-year developer fee report, I believe.
Okay, so we have to file a report every year that gives a five-year recap of what we've collected, what we're gonna use the money for, what we used it for in the past fiscal year, and where our balance is and what we're gonna commit to that. So in your packet, you have a summary of where we are. The fund balance is gonna be designated to pay COP debt service. So we have several years, we have at least three years of payments right now, which is, which is a good thing. And then the more funds that come in, we have one development that's working right now that's not completely, I don't think they've pulled all their permits yet. So after that, I don't know of any other developments that are starting. So then we'll, then we'll, then we'll look at it. Diablo is finished. SEM is nearly done. And then the, the new company, Mark, is, they're almost done. I think they, they may have pulled the rest of theirs. So we'll see what goes after that because there are still a few lots. And then we'll start working on the Northwest expansion. And then I think, there are still lots here and there in Newman that are privately, that we'll see. But I think this'll be, this'll be about it. And we'll have to decide what kind of management we're gonna have.
May I have a motion to accept the five-year developer fee report?
I'll make it.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consideration and acceptance of CSEA Chapter 551 Sumtime Proposal to Newman Prose and Unified School District?
I don't know if there's really a lot to say about these, but this is required piece. Both unions basically need to tell us kind of the areas of contract they want to negotiate and who is willing to want to negotiate. We've had very agreeable negotiations over the last several years. We were anticipating the same thing, but it was next year as we negotiate for 19 to 20.
May I have a motion? A second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Consideration and acceptance of Newman Prose and Unified School District, NCLUSD, the nickel summertime proposal to CSEA, Chapter number 551, basically the same. You have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is five zero. Consideration and acceptance of NCLTA Sumtime Proposal to Newman Prose and Unified School District for the 2019, 2020 school year, same. Okay, and can I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Consideration and acceptance of Newman Prose and Unified School District, the nickel summertime proposal of NCLTA for the 2019, 2020 school year. Motion?
Still moved.
I'll second.
All in favor? Or opposed? Approve single plan for student enrollment for Orisimba High School, Tournament of Education, Yolo Middle School, Fenita Elementary, Hurd Barrington Elementary, Hunt Elementary, and Bonn River Elementary. That took a long time to prove.
Motion took a lot of reading.
You got a motion? Motion? I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is, I have.
You know, you read that, it's like, what, it's forty pages or something like that? And I'm always looking for the statements by Mr. Philpott. First court member should read this correctly, coffee, and I'll buy you lunch.
I, we don't have that. I, I said.
I know you're stripped of this.
No, I have this. He's annoyed now. I have a checklist that I check on when I see.
If I, let me just bring it up to the people in the audience who are these students. On the, on the website are these reports that we're talking about. Each one's about forty-one, forty-two pages long, and they talk about each of those schools. So if you're curious, you go to the website and you can just scroll down. It does take a long time to get to the bottom of. And most of the reports are sort of similar. They're in the same form. But you can read about the schools, who goes to the school, how they're doing, that kind of thing. They're all on the website. Might sound like we just brushed through that, but they're all there. Might sound like we just brushed through that, but they're all there.
It did a lot of homework. You guys have homework.
It is a plan of how we teach you, you know, so if you read, actually read this stuff, and you think that we're good or wrong, on your.
There's actually even money tied to it. I want money to have some.
Very good. It's a lot, but it's worth it. Every, every school's sick. Select CSPA delegate, assembly and nominate. I would like to nominate Mr. Wallace. I would second that.
Appreciate very much. Thank you. This will be my second year, and I am, presum, assuming that I get elected by the rest of the school boards in the county, I will sit on the legislation committee this year. So I'll formulate CSPA's opinion about the legislation that we're down with.
Mr. Wallace also took the upper hand at school, so that's a, that's a, may, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes by. Future vendor items. School of the Month will be Yolo Middle School. Okay, VTD audit report, Strategic Action Plan, and Mutual Services. And Mr. Smith, and Mr. Smith.
So I'm just going to point out a couple of things. One is, at the next meeting, we're going to do a little bit more in-depth on the dashboard, the CD dashboard, which really just became updated, I think it was Thursday of last week. And it's, it's a little easier to read than the old one. But we want to spend some time with you, kind of diving into not only the district data on that and what that means, but also the individual sites. But I will tell you this, it looks good. I mean, there's places for us for improvement, but overall, and a lot of it is, you know, like what you saw tonight with the attendance awards, our sites are really hitting that hard. We have inviting places for, for students to, to attend, and our chronic absentee rate is, is really an improvement. It's really a model of the state, frankly. So we're looking forward to talking about that. And we also want to start the discussion about facilities. So there'll be a discussion at that board meeting as well.
Mr. Bazar?
I don't have any report today.
Mrs. Hurst?
Well, as you can tell, since I made those Lions Club members come here, well, they're wearing their vest and everything, that I am very much for the partnership that we have with the OHS students and Mr. Farinelli's students. I've had the privilege of having some partnerships with different groups, like Mr. Wallace's students. So I wanted to say that I'm very pleased about that, and I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a great break, happy year.
Mr. Snodderling?
Yeah, kudos also to the Lions Club for helping out, getting the kids involved. Kudos to FFA, those kids love them, you know, some of the hardest-working kids, you know, literally seven days a week, so they all left. So I tell them, I think they're great. To our nurse, who keeps us healthy, helps keep the kids healthy, and helps with the calendar and all that. I appreciate all the work that she would do too. And Merry Christmas, everybody.
Mr. Wallace?
I had the pleasure of attending the CSPA conference last week, and came back really motivated. One of the things that Mr. Philpott and I spent a great deal of time on was looking at teacher housing. California is so expensive of a place to live that there were, there's districts down there that are flowing bonds to build apartments so that they can rent them to teachers at a price they can afford. It's got me very excited about looking out at the city, looking out at what we can do. I don't think that we need to build places, but I definitely think that there's some things that we can look at, whether it's just plain helping teachers that might have a big backyard, how they can put a mother-in-law unit in there. The laws have changed, that's allowed. That might be the kind of place that a new teacher would like to live for a year or two, until they got established in our community. We're always trying to look at being a welcoming place for new teachers. We like to get people here and have them stay with us so that y'all don't have a new teacher in your, in your classroom every year. And so I'm, I'm very excited about that. And it's going to be interesting to see what's with the, a new governor. And Merry Christmas to everybody. Thank you to the Yolo kids that came, and I would appreciate if some of you would let me sign your papers.
I'd also like to thank Mrs. Williams. I was at, and the other night, I think it was Wednesday night, seeing her at Carrot University, and that the parents and the children just being very excited, and the teachers giving their time that night, and making everyone realize that school not only is just learning, it's also funding the community. And the more community that we have, the better that we learn. As you can see with, I believe, Mr. Koch, I mean, walked off with a, a salad in there.
Oh, yes.
But thank you for reading, students. You are, have a fantastic holiday season, but please be careful.
Yes.
Really, it's a, don't eat too much. But enjoy, but, and also get some rest and some enjoyment. So have a good evening.
You have a motion to adjourn?
So you have a motion? I'll second it.
All in favor?
All in.